If no one has changes or comments, then we can approve these as a slate. Does anyone have changes or comments to the minutes? So let's approve them as a slate. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes, I'm sorry, David. You go ahead.
I was going to say, I move that we approve all minutes attached to March 13th, 2002, business meeting agenda.
Do I have a second? Michael. And no comments, no discussion. All those in favor, please. Okay, so let's have comments by student representatives. I see our two representatives from the middle school back there. If you could introduce yourselves and...
I'm Eva.
And I'm Carter.
And we're the student representatives from Cables of Middle School. This trimester is ending this Thursday, Thursday, March 15th. The grades in the portal will be closed for parent viewing on Friday, March 23rd.
The basketball bonanza will be held at 6:00 Wednesday, March 21st.
CEMS will soon be performing their spring musical, The Music Man. It will be opening on Thursday, March 22nd at 7:00 PM. And we'll have 7:00 PM shows on the following Friday and Saturday. There will also be a 2:00 showing on Saturday and on the next Sunday.
Spring sports are going to start on April 2nd. That includes lacrosse, softball, baseball, and track. Signups are going on now at Community Services.
Also in sports, this winter's sports numbers were great. There were around 200 participants, and both boys and girl basketball teams needed three teams.
Next week will be Spirit Week. Also, the Last Dance was great.
I'd like to recognize Michael Chase, the Kindness Guy, for a great, inspiring speech, and Nat Jordan for being Cumberland County's spelling bee champ.
Thanks, and good night.
Thank you both. Okay, our high school students? Sasha and Abby?
Hi. All right, so lots happened at the high school. First off, we got our iPads. Well, seniors didn't get the iPads, but everyone else did. And they are awesome. They're great. They're so helpful. I'm actually reading off of them right now. And the science team won the Northeastern Regional Science Bowl, I believe, which is awesome. Congratulations to you guys. And the prom fashion show is a week from tomorrow, which is a big fundraiser for prom. So if you guys want to come, feel free. Spring sports are starting end of the month. And there's a trip to Quebec for the weekend. What is that? Two or three weeks, I think?
In a couple of weeks.
April break.
Over April break. And the students who went to Costa Rica, such as myself, got back two weeks ago, and it was amazing. And the students are coming here on the 28th of March for around three weeks, two or three weeks. I think we're going to try and have them here for our April meeting. And that's it.
All right, well, good evening. The chess team just won the state championship, so congratulations to them. The Find Me One Act play, just recently this weekend, won regionals, and they go to states in two weeks. The jazz ensemble performed at the Berkeley Jazz Fest in Boston last weekend. There's a high school band concert tomorrow night, so anyone who's interested in that, I think it's around 7:00. Seniors will start hearing back from colleges in the next few weeks, which is very exciting for all of the seniors who have applied and have been waiting anxiously to hear back. And the AP senior government class will be going to Washington, DC, and we're leaving next Wednesday. And they will have a tour of the White House and the West Wing, among other activities.
Okay, thanks. Abby, do you know, are there any mock trial fundraisers coming up?
There is, actually. Next, same as the prom fashion show, there's a showing of Miss Representation. I forget where it is, but there's a showing.
Yeah, is there also maybe something at the Good Table?
The Good Table. Also can't remember when that is. You know? If anyone wants to buy tickets for that, they can come see me. So yeah, it's open up, too.
Okay, great. Any questions for David?
Not for the student representatives, but I just noticed that the Item 5 recognition, luckily our student representatives did mention both the science team and the chess team, but the body of the materials mentions the speech, debate, and Cape Olympians. And since we want our agenda, which is published, to be consistent, I would just move that our agenda be adjusted to include...
That was last month.
Oh, goodness gracious.
They came last.
Can I, is that on TV that my foot's going in my mouth?
I believe you were ill, and you were not eating.
And you can leave your foot right there.
I would like to add one more thing.
Yeah.
Sort of a recognition for Nat Jordan. He does have his position at the States or this Saturday at the Abramson Center for the State Spelling Bee Championship. So I believe I speak for all of us when we say wish him luck.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay, great. Any other questions or comments? So let's move on to comments from the public on agenda items. Does anyone have any comments on our agenda for anything that's listed on the agenda? Okay. Item number five, recognition. We have recognition for the science team first. If the science team would like to come up and...
Thank you for the recognition. We only have two of our teammates here today. There's five of us on the team, but this is Ian McInerney, and this is Charlotte Ruddy, and I'm Melissa Stewart. And the other two team members we have are Paul Hammersky and our captain, Ethan Denino. And we have our coach, too, Dr. Sean Grett. We competed in the Northern New England Science Bowl two Saturdays ago, March 3rd. There, we went one-on-one against teams from across Maine, gaining wins to qualify for the semifinals and eventually the finals, both of which were single elimination. There are two halves of each competition lasting eight minutes with a two-minute break between for teams to sub in another player if they so choose. The competition begins with a toss-up question worth four points, which is either multiple choice or short answer, and from the categories biology, physics, chemistry, earth and space, and energy. If a team member answers the question correctly, the team has the chance to collaborate on a bonus question, which is worth 10 points. It's careful to pay attention during the competition because there are rules about everything from interrupting the moderator before the question has been read in its entirety to giving an answer before being recognized by the moderator. The science bowl is obviously about having a strong background in science, but it's also about speed, strategy, and teamwork. We have a short clip to help give you a better idea of what it's like.
They don't have to answer these questions, right?
Please.
This is from last year's National Science Bowl Finals. Double elimination round number eight. Toss-up question one, which is in physical science, multiple choice. Which of the following best describes a thermodynamic isolated system? W, exchanges only energy with its surroundings. X, exchanges no energy with its surroundings. Y, exchanges no mass with its surroundings. Z, exchanges nothing whether it is, that isn't interrupted by A1.
X.
Sorry, that's incorrect. I will reread for Team B. Which of the following best describes a thermodynamic isolated system? W, exchanges only energy with its surroundings. Well, X, exchanges no energy with its surroundings. Y, exchanges no mass with its surroundings. Z, exchanges nothing whether it is energy, matter, or work with its surroundings. B1.
Z.
That is correct.
I'm not sure whether it's Z or C, but...
That is... Science. That is... In any case, we're really hoping that you guys would see here, the guest reader for the questions is indeed the first lady, Michelle Obama. She was there last year guest-reading questions.
Oh, you're right.
Also, this year's event, scheduled to be the keynote speaker, is the President of the United States of America. However, they have said, or Secretary of Energy, so it could be either one.
So, yep, our team will be going to the National Science Bowl in Washington, DC from April 26th to the 30th to compete against teams from across the nation. Some of the highlights of our trip include attendance of the USA Science and Engineering Festival, a tour of the monuments in the area, a visit to the National Mall, and the keynote speech that Dr. Grett talked about, and obviously the competition itself. Thank you again.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for the science team?
You mentioned five people. Is there a much larger science team? And I'd like to have you describe it so that the public can understand that a lot of kids in this town actually participate in the science team. And I think there's a state tournament coming up.
Very good question. Yes, the science team actually competes in three different leagues. One of the leagues we compete in is down in Massachusetts. It's called the North Shore Science League. We also compete in the National Science Bowl, which actually is a small team, only five when we fielded a second team, so we only had 10 students competing in that. We also compete in a competition here in Maine called the Maine Science Olympiad, which is a team of 15 people. Probably the most participation happens down in Massachusetts. We had one bus this year, I believe there were 31 kids riding a bus for two hours down to Massachusetts and back. And yeah, the science team does, there's quite a lot of kids, quite a bit competing. And I would like to take this time to thank you guys for funding these activities. We do appreciate it and try to put the funds to good use. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Grett.
I think it's to be complimented, the fact that 30 kids, that's, I can't do the math, a fifth of a class, but high school kids that actually will compete, go down to New England to compete against much larger schools. It's my understanding, from my one resource, which I don't dare name, well, I'll get in trouble, but you do fairly well. So congratulations.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Well, congratulations, and thank you for representing Cape Elizabeth, and good luck in Washington. We'll look forward to hearing about it. All right, and thank you, Dr. Grett, for coaching and for all the hours I know that you put in that are above and beyond to take this team to the level that they're at. It's a great honor for our school, so thank you. Okay, we will move on now to the chess team. Do we have representatives of the chess team here? Great.
Our students don't have prepared comments, so I'm going to take the liberty of describing this for you a little bit, but please feel free to ask them questions. I'm Mark Parker. I'm one of the parents of one of the students, Brett Parker, one of the members of the chess team, and Colin Smith is with me also. Chess in Cape in recent years has been largely a community services-driven activity, principally by parents. We've tried to initiate some activities within the school system, but it's been with fits and starts. And this year, our team does not actually have a teacher or coach within the school system, per se, but because these kids have been working hard at this for a number of years, they nonetheless took a team to the state tournament representing Cape Elizabeth High School. And this is only the third year that Cape has had a high school team in the chess tournament, and has done very well all three years. And this year in particular, coming away with the championship, competing against eight other teams. There are six high school members currently playing chess, and they are among the highest-rated tournament players in the state. And our best chess player of all was actually competing for the science team, so we didn't even have him for this competition, and that was Ethan Denino. Nonetheless, the remaining players can certainly hold their own with anyone, and those players were Matthew Reali-Hadem, Brett Parker, as I mentioned, Ben Hansel, Robert Farchero, and of course Colin Smith. And they went up to this competition, and it really wasn't even close. Last year, they came away with second place, and this year, they came away with first place. And even though it's a small core of people at this age that are still playing chess to this level of competition, it looks like we'll still have a strong team for a few years to come yet. There are some other students in the system that we hope will keep chess going for years to come. There are some middle school students competing, and in fact, we did have a middle school team that came in second place in its division this year. And through community services and some dedicated parents, we're trying to still instill love of this game with our youngest people in the community, and there are some things going on at the elementary school level. So quite an accomplishment considering that we don't have a large bolus of people doing this, and that it's largely driven by community services and parents. There are some communities that have a very robust program within their school system, and yet our guys still held up pretty well. So I'll open it up if there are any questions.
Any questions or comments?
I'm just curious about when both of you started playing. How old were you, if you remember?
Well, I first learned how to play when I was in first grade. I started competing in tournaments at about third grade. When I got really good, though, was, I don't remember if, I don't know if any of you remember, there used to be a man named here, named Dan DeLuca, and he ran a very good chess program in the elementary school, and he kind of initiated a nice bolus of kids down at the lower levels. So we've been pretty much playing ever since.
I started playing around like seven or eight. I went to the chess program at Community Services. I also participated in the program with Dan DeLuca's Brett mentioned. I played my first tournament as the Maine State Middle School Team Tournament. That was in, I think, fifth grade. That was my first tournament.
Thank you very much, and congratulations. Okay, we'll move on to Item 6, communications, high school literacy. We have Jeff Shad to speak with us about high school literacy.
So Angela Shapani was going to be here tonight and apologizes that she can't be. She was beginning to not feel well towards the end of the day, but she's given me a script, and I'm going to stick pretty closely to the script. So in the fall, the literacy focus with the high school faculty was on vocabulary. And Angela did two presentations to the faculty on the ideas presented in a book called Vocabulary at the Center, which is a book that's recommended by the Maine Department of Education. Trying to decide if I want to editorialize. I won't, to support the work with the Common Course Standards that many states in America have adopted over the past year or two. In the fall, Angela followed that up with a professional book group with a text called Words, Words, Words by Janet Allen. There were 10 faculty members from across content areas who attended the three sessions to learn concepts and strategies of teaching vocabulary. And I will say, as I wander around classrooms for the past few years, every year I can see more awareness and sensitivity on the part of content area teachers to the struggle that kids can have with reading if they don't understand the words. And sometimes in the past, teachers have assumed a level of knowledge of words that may not be the case. So that's really the goal, is to get our faculty more knowledgeable about how to be effective with that and how to identify when kids are struggling with their knowledge of words. In addition to the vocabulary work, we have been preparing for our work with Penny Kittle, who I think is a name that some of the board members will recognize, but I'm not sure it's really been explained who she is or what she's going to bring to the faculty. She's a consultant who will actually be, excitingly, be working not just with high school faculty or middle school faculty, but with combined middle school and high school faculty, grades 7 through 12. Penny is an experienced high school English teacher and coordinator of her district's new teacher program in Conway, New Hampshire, so she's very close to us. She's a nationally known author who's written books about effective teaching of both reading and writing for adolescents, and she's done consulting work for many other districts and presents lots of national conferences. So to get ready for our work with Penny, we created a task force with teachers from core content areas in English Language Arts, Science and History. And the teachers who have been participating are Jamie Micho and Chris Moniz from the middle school, Wynne Phillips, Sean Grett, Melissa Oliver from the high school, as well as representatives from Instructional Support, Cheryl Joyce from the middle school, and Elaine Bissard from the high school. And Steve Connolly, and Meredith and I are part of that task force as well. So we've been doing some work to get ready. Our job as a task force was to determine a direction for our work with Penny and sort of to prioritize what order we want to tackle topics. So in order to do that, we surveyed all students, grades 7 through 12, about their reading habits and how they approach reading a textbook chapter to their pleasure reading habits. We surveyed content area teachers to identify their concerns about their student skills in both reading and writing. And from this data, we determined two areas of concern, content area reading strategies and independent reading on the part of our students. How do we encourage them to read on their own? Huge task. The task force met with Penny on February 28th to plan the first of our two days with her. On March 26th, Penny will conduct two three-hour sessions for faculty in English Language Arts, History, and Science, as well as middle school world language teachers. And the grade levels are mixed. It's 7 through 12 with a variety of teachers from each of those areas mixed in together. And the focus on this day is on content area reading strategies. Penny's second visit in May will focus on structures to help our teachers help support our students' independent reading habits. And my hope, Angela's hope, is that the information from these sessions will lead to areas for summer work. We do think it's an exciting opportunity. The task force is very energized by having met Penny, actually in August, I don't think we mentioned, but in August Penny presented to all the faculty, K through 12, about some of her work so that all faculty, even though they may not be directly involved in work with her, will be familiar with what it's all about. So we're looking forward to our work with Penny Kittle. And that's Angela's report about literacy, high school in grades 7 through 12.
Any questions?
Answer any questions.
Just trying to clarify for the public, you mentioned high school literacy, but it's clear that the middle school is substantially involved in this project as well. Is that correct?
Absolutely correct, yes. With respect to Penny Kittle, yes. Yes.
How does this task force relate to, if it does, to our proposed addition of a K through 12 literacy person? How does this interrelate and assist, or what's the connection?
I think, do you want to answer that, Meredith? Or, okay, I mean, I would say that the connection is really to begin to give some direction. I think we anticipate that even, I think we anticipate, although it's to be worked out, that even with the addition of a K through 12 literacy coordination position, that we hope that our work with Penny will continue so that we can sustain that, can begin to provide some direction. And then really, the role of the K through 12 literacy person is to kind of weave together the various initiatives that we have in literacy, I would say, that had begun with Tammy and Claire work, Tammy Landrigan and Claire Madrigan. I'm getting that...
Mulligan?
Mulligan?
Mulligan, yes. Tammy Mulligan and Claire Landrigan. Or maybe it's the reverse.
I was counting on you.
That the K through 12 literacy coordinator will be there to sort of weave that together and begin to help teachers really understand how to deliver the messages, to continue the messages on a day-to-day basis, and to help with more daily, weekly reinforcement as necessary. And also to help teachers understand, to see teachers, other teachers come in and teach effective literacy strategies and those sorts of things. So it's kind of a pairing together of the work that we've done. It is exciting because both of these layers of work do knit together grade levels across schools. So Tammy and Claire, I won't try their last names because I'll get, Tammy and Claire are working really K through 6. Penny has more of a specialty working with older readers, so she's going to be working with our 7 through 12 teachers.
I guess I would just add, I think that's a great explanation for me. I think, you know, in coming in and talking to the administrators even before the start of this school year, the work that's been done was very exciting and was starting to gain some momentum, but it's become clear, I think, through this process, that it needs continued narrowing so that it's sort of streamlined K through 12, but also that so there's someone local in the district who has the responsibility to kind of shepherd the work.
I appreciate the last point in particular for continuity of use of medical terms, continuity of care, or continuity of learning. I think that's critical. And one last question, Jeff, because it is an area I'm somewhat interested in. You had a heavy emphasis on reading, but I'm assuming that literacy includes writing, including vocabulary, content, and so forth. I assume that will be part of this program as well.
Yes, absolutely. And Penny is really equally adept at either and has written books about both and presents nationally about both, which is one of the reasons we were attracted to her. Because we were limited to two days this year in work with her, we had to decide on a starting place. And because there have been other aspects of things connected to reading that we've been working with our faculties around, that seemed to be the logical place. But the anticipation is that sometime next year, we'll begin to get into the writing piece of it as well, because one of the things that she emphasized at the meeting last week is how interrelated those two skills are. Effective readers are better writers, and good writers are better readers. It's difficult to untangle them.
Well, I appreciate the addition because I think the combination, it was something that is an area we need to work on in this district. I'm glad to see the both of them connected.
Yeah, Kate.
I'm interested in the world language teachers in this process.
Right.
I wouldn't have thought world language would be, so help me understand that.
Our world language teachers, K through 12, are very enthusiastic and like to learn everything about everything. And really, there's a tremendous amount of overlap, particularly in certain areas, for example, vocabulary instruction. In fact, there is a lot of work that says that world language teachers are actually some of the most skillful vocabulary teachers because they can't assume a level of knowledge that content area teachers do. Certainly, kids do a lot of reading, albeit in foreign languages, but the skills are the same. They do writing, but the skills are the same. The middle school foreign language teachers are going to be part of this. The high school teachers would be, but it's conflicting with some other priorities related to assessing our seniors and some other things. And so the timing was just unfortunate for them. So I expect that they will jump on board eagerly when the next opportunity arises.
And I would think it's an amazing connection. Now I understand it. I mean, words come, America, there's so many Latin words, prefixes, suffixes, that will help extend world language as well as understanding regular language and comprehension. It's great. It's exciting.
Good.
I think that piece, too, of sort of common vocabulary, common terminology, again, sort of looking K-12, that piece also speaks to the need for involvement of teachers of other content areas, and world language is a great example. They start with our students in third grade, so they're very connected to the language development process, to include reading and writing for our students.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yep.
Okay, we'll move on to the vision and mission update. Meredith?
Oh, I thought the board members were going to give the update. Jeff, we hope, I'm smiling, Mary and I are smiling. The vision and mission work group met for a couple of hours this afternoon. The vision and mission work group has met for a half-day last week, a couple of hours the week before, and... the week before, and put in time during vacation, reading all of the stakeholder input from the sessions that were held with faculty, with students, with community members, with board members. Is that all? I'm missing somebody. Students, did I mention students? That may be everyone. And we are very close. We think we've identified a vision statement, but we don't want to provide the vision statement without the context of the mission statement. This afternoon, we wound up with a couple of slightly different versions, but we are probably a few words apart, really, in my estimation of a draft mission statement. Again, we had hoped timeline-wise to bring that back to you tonight, but I think the selection of the words is important enough that you don't want to force the process. So we may ask you at some point for a special business meeting or to add this perhaps to a workshop agenda for another scheduled meeting, just to bring you the draft, because we would still like to go out to receive feedback on the draft from all of the stakeholder groups again and try to finalize this prior to the end of the school year, certainly. In May, if we could. Anything you could add?
No, just thank you to all the members of the team. We have, the team that's working on this includes community members, teachers, administrators, board members, and Meredith, and am I forgetting anybody?
No, you're not.
No. And they have given quite a bit of time and energy, and there's a lot of, I'll use the word "passion" behind the work. That's a word that keep people coming back to. There's a lot of passion in this work, and it's a great group of people who are giving lots of hours and a lot of enthusiasm. And, you know, it's been very fulfilling work to flesh out the mission and vision and to use, you know, the data that's been given to us by all of those stakeholders to inform this decision. There were so many common themes that ran through each meeting with each stakeholder. And so I think we're close, and I'll look forward, I think we're all looking forward to showing it to the board and getting your take on it. And Elizabeth has been on that committee along with myself and Meredith, so.
I would just like to add that it's been really exciting to be a part of that committee and that I love the enthusiasm of everybody in the room. Passion absolutely describes it, but it's just really wonderful to be a part of that group and the community members and everybody just bringing so much enthusiasm.
I know.
To this process. It's been fun.
I would say we've had no difficulty identifying the common themes. Our difficulty is in narrowing our word choice to call out a statement that we think will resonate with all of the stakeholder groups. But it is definitely an enormous investment of time and energy, and it is a great group of people to be working with. So thank you to all of them.
May I ask you a question? So I haven't been participating, and so I'm very excited to learn more about your work. So I've been wondering whether I can put you on the spot a little bit and ask about what those themes that are emerging are? Because I've heard that come out of this group before and in other contexts. I've heard that, you know, one of the things that's exciting is that from the community, from parents, from non-parents, from faculty, from students, we're hearing a lot of the same kinds of themes. But I don't have a very good sense of what those are, except for what I've learned in my focus group when I participated in one of those evenings. So is there anything you can share about what those themes are?
I know, it doesn't quite seem fair, but I think part of what we've talked about as a group, not today's meeting, but at our last meeting, was making sure that we made copies of all the stakeholder input available, at the same time that we roll out the draft vision and mission, because we think that will allow other people to see why we moved in the direction that we've moved with the vision and mission. You know, I think that it's certainly not a departure from the work that we've been doing with respect to the fact that people still believe in a solid academic foundation in preparing students to be successful in whatever path they choose to go down. I think that there's also a recognition, though, that success comes in many forms and that we need to be thoughtful about respecting the individual talents and differences that we see in our students, that we need to be mindful of the fact that the world they're entering is ever-changing, that they're part of a much larger community than the local community, and that the underlying skills, sort of your internal compass, for lack of a better term, you know, your confidence, your resilience, your ability to think critically and problem-solve are also integral to building a successful future.
Okay, well, if that was an unfair question, it was a very good answer, so thank you.
It was, it was. We have to watch the tape to see if that's reflected.
Oh, you hit all the high points. Okay, so any other questions around mission and vision? Yeah? Okay. We'll move on to retirements and resignations. Meredith?
So I only have one retirement to announce, and that is that we received a letter from Dwight Ely at the high school announcing his retirement at the end of the school year.
Any questions about that?
I was very sad to see that resignation. And I know we'll be able to speak later, but he's worked, he's an amazing teacher.
Yes.
I admire him greatly. I admire him greatly.
Yes, yeah.
Are we going to be able to speak later?
I would assume that we'd be able to speak in the May meeting, I think, is when we recognize our retirees. And we'll be able to speak, we'll make sure that we're.
Just so Dwight doesn't stay awake at night, I wouldn't have nice things to say about Dwight. He's been a pleasure to be on the opposite side of.
You've been in negotiations with him.
Yes, and he's been on my side. I really enjoy him.
Yes.
Are school board members typically invited to any kind of like retirement?
Usually, yes.
Put on by the?
Yes. In the past, that's been the case, so.
Might be an opportunity for.
I know, that's an opportunity too. And then for new board members, we also have a meeting, it's usually the May meeting, I believe, though it may be the June meeting. I'll have to look that up. But towards the end of the year, one of our meetings is the meeting where we recognize all of our teachers who are moving on or who are retiring and, you know, offer our thanks. And we have a little reception as well. So that would be the perfect opportunity for people who would like to say something about anyone who's retiring, because we have someone in our audience tonight who's retiring as well and will be missed tremendously and has been a huge part of our community that I know we'd like to recognize as well. So with that being said, we'll move on to item D, which is Meredith's report.
Okay, so I'm going to stick with the literacy theme initially, just to say that Tammy and Claire, last names somewhat known, have been in the district for the last two days. They worked yesterday with the K through six assessment task force at Poncove, sort of reviewing the work that's been done to date, planning for next steps, and doing some examination of data and really delving into the common core and looking at how the common core aligns with our current curricula and what other work might need to be done in that framework. And then today, they met with teams at the middle school, all of our fifth and sixth grade teachers, worked with them today, doing similar work, but really focused on middle school and the age and stage of the students that they're working with. And Linda Alfiero from Poncove has helped to coordinate that work across the two schools. So I appreciate that work. And I have to say, for me, sort of in and out of the sessions, both yesterday and today, it's nice to hear, I'll use that word again, enthusiasm, the enthusiasm that teachers have, I think the confidence they have in Tammy and Claire to sort of give them good direction and provide them with responsive feedback on sort of the challenges and dilemmas they may be facing in their classroom. Today, some of the fifth and sixth grade, well, I was with the sixth grade teachers when they were looking at how to, their evaluation, their student evaluations and assessments and receiving some feedback about that. And it was a really healthy exchange and full of laughter and, again, just a real comfort with the process. So that's a good thing. We're much better able to grow when we're comfortable. Let's see, we also have in the PLC realm, some work going on. The middle school, Poncove started, I think, right before February break, a leadership seminar that Jane and Tom are leading, and the middle school started that just after break. And Steve Connolly and Jane are leading a seminar, teacher leadership basically being the theme. So I think we have eight or so people at the middle school and roughly that number at Poncove, I'm not entirely sure, participating.
Meredith, for the audience, we're now used to the word PLC.
Professional learning community.
This short explanation, would it?
Yes. So again, I think schools, when many of us started teaching, tended to be places where you worked more in isolation, and you went into your classroom and you did the work independently with your students, and then you went home at the end of it, you closed your door, got your work done, and you went home at the end of the day. Schools today, and what the research tells us about the best, the most successful schools and where student growth tends to be the highest, are schools in which teachers work collaboratively, meaning they work in teams, they work across disciplines, across grade levels, within disciplines, within grade levels, depending on what task they're working on, to really look at student work, to talk about their practice, to think through how to approach challenges and problems that they may be seeing, again, to improve outcomes for kids.
Thank you.
Sure. Let's see, I'm going to let Michael talk about budget when we get to workshop updates, but that process continues. I also had the opportunity to attend last week the Career Fair at the middle school. It's a great, great event coordinated through largely by Gelschmater, our volunteer coordinator, but with support of certainly lots of our faculty and administration and the Middle School Parents Association. But professionals, people working from the community and the larger community are invited in, and students have the opportunity to choose some sessions and go around to different sessions to hear about the careers these people are participating in. Some great questions. I happened to sit in on a session with a gentleman from Southern Maine Community College talking about forensic science, which was very engaging for everyone in the room. A young man who is a computer game designer, an attorney, again, just a wide variety of career options. So certainly, middle school is a great time to expose students to the many opportunities that exist out there. Anything you would add to that, John?
No, I mean, one of the most interesting ones was a computer game designer, he's a kid forever. And anytime that students at that age encounter, spending their career just to realize that there's so many out there, and despite whatever you think you might aspire to or train you, your paths can take many different ways to get to it. I think they're often surprised that, well, I studied for this, but I ended up doing that. And they're always very, it's important that they know that they can change and trial out.
Another very popular session, since iPads rolled out last week, was the app development session where I didn't see, everyone was sort of huddled around and talking excitedly back and forth. So a great day. Let's see, the High School Parents Association tonight was sponsoring a stress management tips and techniques session called Calm, Cool and Collected, something which we all certainly can learn from. I was able to attend last night, and Kate was there as well, a program called Hear Our Voices that's been going on for a few years, but sponsored by our World Language Department and this year in coordination with our English Language Learning Program. And there were students, current students, former students, students who are exchange students, and a parent who are on a panel representing the nations of Iran, Afghanistan, Ethiopia, Italy and Germany, talking about their experiences in this country, contrasting some cultural pieces. Food was a very popular question from the audience, as well as sort of the educational experiences between America and their sort of home nations. Really well-attended event. And tomorrow night at Poncove, there is a presentation about the social thinking curriculum by Michelle Garcia Winner. I'm forgetting the presenter's name right now, but she is a main specialist in the field of autism, and that presentation is from six to eight tomorrow evening. And on Thursday, Poncove's busy this week, there's also a program called Views and Voices, which involves world language, media, center and art. And that is from six to 7:30 on Thursday. So again, you'll have an opportunity to see some great work and hear some performances from the students. What have I missed? The coffee chats, I forget what I've called them, community coffees with the superintendent. One was scheduled for this Saturday, the 17th. That is postponed to next Saturday, the 24th, still at 9:00 a.m. in the community room, community center, community room. I think that's it.
Lucia Riordan.
Lucia Riordan, thank you. Thank you. Where iPads come in handy.
The coffee, do you have a theme that you'll be, or something, a topic?
Typically, typically the agenda is open, but I would hope that I will have an opportunity to talk a bit about vision and mission on that day for people who are able to attend.
Great.
We'll be discussing the mission and vision theme.
I will be talking certainly in broad terms, yes.
Just checking.
Questions, comments? No? Okay. Then let's move on to new business. Item number seven, a consideration to approve the class of 2012 Project Graduation Committee fundraising efforts in the amount of approximately $20,000 according to board policy, DF-R fundraising. Do I have a motion? John?
Yes, I move that we approve the class of 2012 Project Graduation Committee fundraising efforts in the amount of approximately $20,000 according to board policy DF-R.
Do I have a second? Okay, all right. Any questions or comments or concerns? All this in favor? All right. Meredith, did you have something you wanted to say about Project Graduation?
No, other than this is a tremendous fundraising undertaking. It's, I don't even know how many years this has been going on in the community, but certainly a great benefit to graduating seniors and a way for the community to know that those students are in a safe place at the time of graduation.
And for those in the audience who don't know, Project Graduation is a fundraiser, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, this is my first year with a child going through this, but it's a fundraiser. They raise funds to put the seniors on a bus at 6:00 in the evening, and they take them to a destination unknown to them or to really anyone in the public. And they have a social evening, they are chaperoned and sort of off together with their class until early in the morning, like 5:00 a.m., is that correct? When they are brought home. And it is a way to keep students safe that evening. I think the program was developed many years ago when there were several drunk-driving incidents that happened in the state of Maine, and I don't remember, maybe seven kids died. Does anyone know? I think there were seven deaths in one year. And Project Graduation started here in Maine and is now a national program. So we are continuing on with that, and I think we've done this for many, many years, and it's been a great success. Our thanks to all of the parents who spend months and months and months and, you know, even up to a year, planning this evening for our seniors to honor them for, you know, and keep them safe. So that's all I know to say, really. Kate?
There's no, well, there's no telephones or iPads or computers on the bus. Am I right about that? That the kids go together as a group, and most of them have been together since kindergarten, and they're together the whole night with each other, face to face. And I think that alone is pretty special.
Yeah, it'll be the last time they'll be together until their 10-year, 15-year reunion. So. So it's a, it's a great opportunity, a very nice thing that the community does for the kids. And the fundraising is tremendous. It's a, it is a tremendous undertaking, but well worth it to keep the kids safe. So let's move on to item number B, consideration to approve Cape Elizabeth Robotics Team travel to the VEX World Competition in Omaha, Nebraska, March 15th through 17th, 2012.
If someone's going to make a motion, it should be to the VEX National Championship in Omaha.
Okay. Okay. So strike the word "world" and add "national." Thank you. And Joe, were you ready to make a motion?
I was ready to make a motion. I was gonna hold off to see what Maggie had to say to make sure you weren't adding extra words.
She switched out. Sorry, here's the page. I have to read, Joe.
I move that we consider to approve the Cape Elizabeth Robotics Team travel to the VEX National Competition in Omaha, Nebraska, March 15th through 17th, 2012.
Any question? Or let's have a second, actually, I'm sorry, excuse me. Anyone, second, John? Any questions or concerns?
I just had one clarification. I know this is the one where there will be no school staff chaperoning, and I know you sent us in the notes the, the relevant policy in part, I don't know the normal, but will the parents sign some sort of waiver releasing us of, because we're not chapero, uh, school staff won't be chaperoning, so I didn't understand if there's a different process.
There, school staff are not chaperoning, but the parents who are chaperoning have been basically through a kind of pre-trip orientation and are approved as volunteers by the school district. Because they are traveling as representatives of the school district and traveling with school equipment, I felt it was important for the board to approve them, approve the trip, excuse me.
Okay. Any other questions? David?
Just to clarify, I assume that because they are school representatives, it is covered by a insurance policy?
That's correct.
And secondly, I doubt that there is releases, because they're invalid as a matter of law anyways.
There are not releases, because we believe they are representing the district and are therefore covered by our insurance.
Thanks.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone? No? All right. All those in favor? Seven oh. All right, next, consideration to approve the proposed mock trial team trip to Albuquerque, New Mexico, National Mock Trial Competition, May 2nd through 6th, 2012. Do I have a motion, please? David?
I would move that the board approve the proposed mock trial team trip to Albuquerque, New Mexico, national, in Albuquerque, New Mexico, the National Trial, Mock Trial Competition from May 2nd through the 6th, 2012.
Okay. Do I have a second, please? Michael? Okay, any questions or comments, concerns? No? Okay, great. Just good luck to both of our teams, I guess I would add. All right, all those in favor? Seven oh. All right, item number D, consideration to approve 2011-2012 budget adjustment to reallocate high school athletic stipend funds in the amount of $8,693.76. Do I have a motion, please? Joe?
Sure. I move that we consider to approve the 2011-2012 budget adjustment to reallocate high school athletic stipend funds in the amount of $8,693.76 for the memorandum of the athletic administrator attached.
Great. Do I have a second? Elizabeth? And Meredith, do you want to tell us a little bit about that?
Sure. The positions that we're talking about are, excuse me, I'm looking at the wrong page right now, but are the tennis coaching positions. And when these positions were approved, they were approved at the sort of varsity level and assistant levels. There has been, with the decision of the coaches, sort of a reconfiguration of those hours based on availability of the individuals involved. So because one of the coaches couldn't commit to the full 154 hours, the adjustment has been made to sort of put the hours with the correct individuals, but the total cost for the tennis program coaches has not changed, it's just that each individual is getting a different amount of money.
Okay. Any questions or concerns or comments? David?
Just a minor question. It doesn't just involve a reallocation of money, it does involve one person becoming head coach, and the head coach becoming sort of an assistant to both, or am I misreading that?
Yes. You're correct. Andy Strout had been the varsity coach for both boys and girls, and had two assistant coaches. Because one of the assistant coaches couldn't fulfill the full obligation of the assistant coaching role, the other, former assistant coach has been made a head coach, and she will be taking over as the girls' varsity coach, Andy will be the boys' varsity coach, and the remaining individual will be the assistant to both teams.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor? Next, we have a slate of nominations for co-curricular and staff and athletic. Could I have a motion to approve the slate, please? David?
I move that we approve the listed athletic and co-curricular staff nominations that set forth in 7E of our, of the school board business meeting agenda dated March 13th, 2012.
Okay. Do I have a second? Okay. Any questions, concerns, comments about our slate? No? All right, all those in favor? Okay, seven oh. Okay, consideration to approve the 2012-2013 academic year calendar as presented. You have a copy of that in your packet, and if you remember correctly, this is the calendar that, this is calendar B, which is the calendar that includes two breaks, a break in February and a break in April. So it's a more traditional, it's the more traditional calendar. And I think we did talk with Meredith a little bit about continuing to explore, in our last meeting, continuing to explore the proposal A, and I think there were a few issues with that for the coming year. So do I have a motion to approve the proposed 2012-2013 academic year calendar as presented? David?
I move that we approve the 2012-2013 academic year calendar as attached to our school board business meeting agenda of March 13th, 2012.
Okay. Do I have a second? Joe? Okay. And any discussion, comments? Michael?
I just noticed this, but we might want to review this, because if you look in, for example, the month of October, it looks like for a lot of the months, there's a week missing. So I'm not sure if it was just a formatting, in other words, after the 5th, it goes to the 9th, unless I'm on a different.
The 6th would be Saturday, 7th Sunday, 8th Sunday.
So only five days. Okay.
It's a five-day calendar instead of a seven-day, a five-day week calendar.
Okay.
Kind of weird looking.
Gotcha, thank you.
You're welcome. David?
Since I was not, I, and the one meeting I missed seemed to have everything done in my absence, which probably tells me something, but there only were boards appointed and things done, and that's why I made the mistake of a speech debate. I noticed there was some discussion as to why one versus the other. And a short explanation, I think, would be helpful, because I wasn't there, and because it might be for people who didn't see it, but the non-traditional calendar seemed like the better idea to me, but there was obviously some reasons why we picked the tradition, why it's being recommended we predict the traditional calendar. So could I have them?
Sure. The most critical reason is that right now, by legislation, our calendar can have no more than nine dissimilar days to the Community Technical Education Center, so in our case, PaaS. So we have to have at least, the majority of our days have to be in common. There is legislation pending to have that changed to no more than five days that are not in common. I think for this district, that would be challenging. Certainly, we would want to honor the students attending PaaS and find ways to help them get to their program on days that the program was in session, but because there are something like 19 sending schools to PaaS, it becomes very complicated and could limit districts in setting up professional development opportunities, among other things. So one, legislatively, legally, we're sort of bound right now to this calendar structure. I would say the other factor, and one of the things that came through in the feedback, while the feedback was fairly evenly distributed, I think there was a concern that it would be difficult for this, if we were the only district that were to move down that road. And it was my understanding from the board that they would like me to explore the possibility of a regional move to a calendar with a March break, in part because there are family member considerations for some of our staff who might have children attending schools in other districts. There was a sense that for parents, that community childcare opportunities would be more easier, more easily attained if it was a similar calendar with other districts. So I think it was an opportunity to give some more time to explore those possibilities.
If I may comment, the first one is, answers the question for this year. The second one, I understand and have read the feedback, and those are all concerns, but for the record, I think that the primary goal is, what is, what is the best academic and educational product we can produce? And my gut, in my limited reading to date, indicates that it's the other alternative. It may not be possible, but I think that should, my view is that should be our primary goal. And parents, and a parent of a child that needs childcare and everything else, I'd rather have better education, and I'll figure out the other things.
I believe there was also the consideration that during the February break statewide, especially at the high school level, there's a lot of state meets and competitions that happened during that week.
Well, it's a, that's a good point, but it's a, it's a very good point, but I know there are very, again, I'll just state, I don't want to go over a debate that happened when I wasn't here, but there are, I can understand those reasons, but as much as I love athletics, and believe it or not, I did four sports in high school, I still think academics is the most important thing.
Well, I think it's not just athletics, it's all the other teams that have been presenting before us. They also, it's an important week in the calendar for all of those.
I understand that teams include chess teams and tennis teams.
Okay, because they're not athletics.
Well, somebody was on a chess team, I call it athletic.
John?
I just wanted to add also, David, because you weren't here, that the last time Meredith gave us some idea about the feedback that we, that we got around the proposal, which was split, exactly split 50-50.
I did read.
Okay, you saw it, so, you know, despite the fact that this is a big change, and it does have an impact on all of these issues, there were quite a number of people in the community who saw, I think, the academic benefit of the, of the, of the switch. So we're moving forward with the traditional calendar for next year, but I, but I think the community has expressed a willingness to take a hard look at this issue.
I appreciate that, John, that's what I'd like to hear. Thank you.
I think that's true. Any other comments or questions? Okay. All right, thank you. So all those in favor? Okay, so consideration to adopt the 2012 school board goals as presented. Do I have a motion, please? Joe?
Sure. I move that we consider to adopt the 2012 school board goals as presented.
Okay, do I have a second? David?
I would second, but modify the motion to adopt rather than consider to adopt.
Okay. All right. So, are you? Okay.
Just being technical, I mean, I'm a lawyer, whatever.
I know, I know. So for the public, I will read through the school board goals. We agreed upon seven goals in our February meeting. It's taken us, or actually, yes, it was early February that, that we met, we had a retreat and came up with seven goals. Number one, to review and sponsor a school budget that maintains vital programs and services within the district. Number two, to successfully negotiate four separate contracts. We have four separate contracts out right now, administrators, ed tech two and three, which is one bargaining unit, ed tech ones, and administrative support, which is another bargaining unit, and maintenance, bus drivers, food service workers, and custodians. Our goal number three is to support and endorse an updated and revitalized district mission and vision statement that reflects the values and expectations of the Cape Elizabeth community. And as Meredith has spoken to this evening, we're well underway with that work. Number four, utilize the updated mission and vision work to begin the process of creating a strategic plan for the district to be used to guide the direction of the district for the upcoming years. Number five, explore district topics during workshops and business meetings, including A, school-to-school transitions, B, teacher-administrator evaluations, and C, curriculum alignment school-to-school. Number six, create an online district report card or an annual report that includes agreed-upon benchmarks to measure the district's performance. And number seven, initiate an audit, an audit of the Cape Elizabeth School Policy Manual. And that work has begun, begun this week, actually. We will, assuming these goals are agreed upon and adopted, we will continue to update the public on how we're doing with each of these individual goals. So any questions around the goals from the board or comments? David?
I just wanted to note for the public, first of all, I agree with these goals, I think they're wonderful. But I think people have to realize, these are very ambitious goals. I think they're achievable, but they're ambitious in two ways. One, we have limited, we're getting substantially less funding this year from the state/federal government, and some of the less financial but equally important topics, for example, create an online district report card, explore district topics on, and five on those major items, these are fairly important and tough topics to accomplish in a year. I want the public to understand that we're willing to do it, and we believe we'll achieve it, but this is an ambitious, but I think ultimately extremely beneficial set of goals.
I agree. I mean, it will be an important year for sort of setting the path for coming years, and it's an exciting, it's an exciting year to be on the board, particularly with the new superintendent, and to be doing this work in conjunction with Meredith. I think, you know, there's a lot of energizing and interesting work on our goals to do, so that will define the district. Any other comments or concerns? Okay, so, Michael?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, many of these goals are school board-directed initiatives, where last year, the school board and the district leadership team identified literacy and professional learning communities as our two primary long-term goals, and those, those have not changed, and our desire is to, you know, to see those goals implemented and realizing is those are multi-year goals. So that's why those remain our two primary goals, where these goals, many of these are more school board-directed, and what I would call a few are more operational, such as negotiating the contracts and, you know, reviewing sponsoring the school, the school budget.
Thank you for pointing that out, Michael, I appreciate that.
Just a quick question for Michael, is what you're doing, Michael's pointing out, these are goals for the school board as opposed to goals for the school district, which I think is an important distinction for people to understand, and I appreciate your mic pointing that out.
Anyone else? No? Okay, all those in favor? All right. Thank you. Thank you. Committee reports. Michael, is there anything you want to say around finance?
Sure. We had the first budget, actually, the second budget workshop. At the first workshop, the superintendent introduced the proposed budget for the 2012-2013 school year. We had our workshop. Our last workshop focused on salaries and benefits, instructional support, and staffing at all departments. Our next meeting, we will target capital improvements, community services, facilities and maintenance, transportation, professional development, co-curricular and athletics. That will be on March 20th. And then the March 27th workshop will target remaining items and many of the revenue drivers, state, local funding. So if the public, if you do have an interest in those areas, please attend the workshop. Or if you're unable to attend, feel free to submit questions to the school board. And I think those are the only items I had regarding the budget.
I didn't catch, did you happen to mention that the meetings are taped? So if people want to.
I did not. I did not mention that. They are, they are taped and available, I presume, on the website under, there's a budget section on the website that all the materials presented are accessible.
Great. Thank you, Michael. And policy? John?
Sure. So in, in policy, consistent with our board, school board goal number seven, around the audit of our policy manual, we met yesterday morning very, very early with Ann Chapman from Drummond Woodson, who's our, who is an expert on school board or school district policy. And after her initial review of our, of our policy manual, we discussed a core set of policies which are required by law or recommended by Drummond Woodson as policies that we should have in place, and talked about a process of reviewing those policies. Many of our policies have not had review in a, in a number of years. And there's also a sense that the policy manual at times gets into areas that, you know, ought to be governed by administrative practice as opposed to, to by school board policy. So that's the, the beginning of that process. We also reviewed a policy that was in front of the committee and was on, on track to come back to the board for second reading, which was policy GBEBB, which you all know to be Staff Conduct with Students. We had some vigorous debate about the policy based on the recommendations that came from Ann Chapman. And that policy is now not before the board tonight and, but will be probably by our next board meeting. Maybe by our next board meeting.
Yeah, it's tricky because the policy committee meets the day before.
Meets too soon, right.
So it might be before.
Okay. So the committee will be reviewing the proposal from Drummond Woodson to be involved in, in that audit process. And that's how we're moving that forward. So thank you.
Any questions or concerns? David?
Not a concern. I just wanted to clarify that I think it's important to realize that the policy that John mentioned is being further discussed because it was determined to be vitally important to get the actual administrators and teachers involved in that process as opposed to a legal issue or, the debate was not much of a debate in the sense that we, it was determined that it was such a critical matter that we needed to get the people who actually do it involved in the process.
That's a good point.
Thank you, David. That's a good point. Okay. Any other questions, concerns, comments? Mike, did you raise your hand?
I, I did. Mary, thank you for noticing. I just had one more committee update when, when it was appropriate.
Pardon me?
Another.
Okay.
Okay. One, I wanted, I'm the liaison to CF, and just wanted, we've had monthly meetings with CF. And for those new to the district or maybe new to the school system, CF is the Cape Elizabeth Education Foundation. And this is a big year for CF. It's the 10-year anniversary. And several of the programs you may hear, we discuss at the school board meetings, from iPads in the high school to the achievement center, to the math lab, to Daily Five that's being implemented at Pond Cove, social thinking, professional learning communities. CF has either provided the seed money for these programs or, in many cases, you know, the entire funding for it. So I would like to thank CF and many of the volunteers and donors in the community. And as part of the 10-year anniversary, they're going to be reaching out to the community to reintroduce CF. And more of a real-time update, this is the second year CF is doing rolling grants. Historically, there were two grants cycles for the year, but this, starting last year, they did a rolling grant where not only teachers, but administrators, anyone involved with the Cape Elizabeth School District could apply for grants on a monthly basis. And this is the second year of that cycle. And we have received some questions on how it works in terms of grants. If you are interested, you can email grants@cf.us. And if you have any questions on, if you, you know, are you allowed to do a grant? Would this be covered by a grant? Is this something CF would cover? You know, I would encourage you to use, to, you know, communicate with them. Or you can also find contact information on the website. But it is the 10th anniversary, and I'm sure we'll hear some more on, on the things they've done to support the district.
Thank you, Michael. Any other committee reports?
Legislative committee? Unless you're nodding to somebody.
No, no. That's okay.
I'm on, I'm the sole member of our legislative committee, and I've been meeting with myself. And regrettably, I don't have much to report because.
Those must be long meetings.
I have to say, congratulations on, that is a really nasty but clever cut.
Very clever.
And I won't remember that. But I'm not correcting you. In any event, with that, with that overture and, now I'm completely tongue-tied. There are at least four major bills being proposed by Governor Lepage, which just became printed. There's been a lot of summaries and speculation as to what they are. We're still trying to meet with our state reps to find out more about it. There are some public hearings coming up. But depending on the actual language and what's actually done, they could be very significant in terms of charter schools, allowing schools just to open enrollments to, to students from other districts, which may or may not be good, because there's some other questions as to whether or not one might be forced to enroll, open your enrollment to students from other districts, yet receive substantially less, I mean, you have to think about it. Students from other districts coming to our schools without paying our local taxes, but, and we receiving substantially less funding. So there is some very serious issues coming up. And we're trying to work with all three of our representatives to get more information and with the Main School Management Association to get more information. But Meredith, who's the adjunct to my one-person committee, who I don't get to talk to, but apparently that's, why? We're trying to keep abreast of that. When we have more, we'll try to keep you informed.
Thank you. Thanks for pointing that out. There are some public hearings later this week, actually, I think tomorrow, Thursday, and Friday on three of those proposals, and, and one being the charter schools and religious school choice that we'll be keeping an eye on. And we have people in other districts who are going up to, to testify against those bills, so.
I would just add, you know, David brings up the point that we might be having to enroll students without receiving tuition from them. There's also a provision that if, if students from this community were to enroll in institutions in other places, we might be required to pay.
Like private schools?
If they were to enroll at a private school. That we would pay the full sum of the tuition, and yet we would only receive the state funding through EPS, which is approximately a tenth of our cost to educate a student. We receive about $1,200.
I actually feel like I'm a member of a committee now.
Me too.
But the, the point is, it appears scary, but I don't want people to think that this is necessarily written stone yet because it is at the very early stages. And quite frankly, what he's proposing is so radical, our governor, and potentially unconstitutional, it's going to be an interesting battle.
It will be.
Can I make one request? I know if there is a deadline or if there's a, a request from someone on the school board to have the school board submit some sort of letter in support or against some of these of, I know last time we had a pretty tight deadline and we were trying to get it out. So given, these are very complicated topics. If someone does choose to request the school board submit a, a letter in defense or against this, if they would, you know, please allow some, you know, several weeks for us to review the information.
Sometimes it's difficult because these hearings come up, these hearings were not announced until last week, actually, the end of last week. They sort of, you know, put these on the front.
The bills were only introduced, the language for the bills was only made available last week, and the hearings were scheduled the end of last week. So it's difficult, it's a moving target in that sense.
And in fairness to the people who, person who drafted it last year, that was done in a day because that's all the time that one has. It is, it is literally, this is how fast we move. Unless we want to hire a professional lobbyist and meet instantaneously, all we can, quite frankly, all I could as the sole member offer is I'll give the best notice that I can. And that's the best one can do.
Yeah. Meredith?
I would just encourage people to go online and read the language of the bills for themselves on the DOE website. They are available there. There's a link. You can certainly go to the legislative tabs as well. And then the education committee who hears these bills, their website, their email addresses, excuse me, are published. So if you want to voice your opinion on a particular bill, you can certainly contact those education committee members, their email addresses.
Great. Okay. Thanks, Meredith. Okay. Anything else? Anyone else for committee reports? Agenda requests. Agenda requests for next month. Announcements of upcoming meetings. You, Michael, have already announced the March 20th meeting and the agenda for that. For finance and budget, when is the next policy meeting?
Monday before the next business meeting. Is it the 12th?
Do you have it counted here?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't have it.
It'd be 11. I can tell you in one moment.
Okay.
The ones with the iPads can answer.
It is the 10th. I'm sorry. The policy meeting is the 9th.
Okay. Policy committee meeting, yeah, Monday at 7:30 a.m. on April 9th.
There's one other meeting that I think Meredith has recently scheduled. It's going to be the 30th with our legislators, which I think would, I don't know if it would technically be a public meeting, but the public is more than welcome to attend. I think it's on the 30th.
I think I've just heard that both the Senate and House have been scheduled to meet now on the 30th. That was the most recent communication I received today. So that means the legislative.
I just want to tell Michael that I just heard this, I haven't read your emails, it's only hours ago. So this is how fast it changes, Michael.
Wow. Unbelievable.
So in essence, we're not meeting on the 30th, and I now have just discovered. Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Okay. With that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I move that we adjourn.
Okay. Do I have a second? Okay. Elizabeth? All those in favor? 10-0. Thank you.